A little past time, if you will by way of a word of prayer for folks. Father, thank you, Lord, for giving us another nice day, Lord. And thank you for giving us a day that you never promised us. Lord, we want to ask you to bless this city, bless the people in this room, and be with the sick, the macheteed. And for the coming season, Lord, we want to ask you to bless our many women who fight for our freedom, have fallen and still are fighting. Thank you for them, let us not ever forget them. We want to ask you to bless the spirit of God. Please, I expect you to be your will, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Dr. Gage. Public area rezoning 215 Faulkner Way. Anybody here concerned with 215 Faulkner Way? Don't say it out here?
I've got some things going on, so... I'll be quick, I've got to get to the NA X meeting that's starting right now. In regard to the property 215 Faulkner Way that was approved last month in the planning and zoning board, I just had a couple of concerns that I wanted to put out there. I would like to start by saying that the concept of the idea is something that I am for, and I think that it could be a very good project if done right. But my questions and concerns are mainly about whether or not it is feasible in the particular location, whether the concept or the idea is a good idea or not. The location needs to be something that's suitable for it, as well as if it is deemed to be suitable as far as the location for that concept, and I'll choose some recourse with that concept. Again, I'm all for that type of concept in trying to restructure, remodel older houses and for further use. But I would just like to see that if it's something they can do, they have all their, everything that they need approvals for taken care of on the front end, so that it's not something that gets dragged out. My questions and concerns, and again, I'm just going to list these off and then leave you all to discuss, because I need to get to this next meeting, but I did want to voice my concerns. Number one being the current state of the residents that's up for consideration, specifically concerns as to the feasibility of the existing structure to be used as a structural platform for the remainder of positive work to be done. By my just glance in driving by the property, the property is in a state that I would consider to be a condemnable state. I believe the property owner is aware of that, as well as the building inspector as well. I guess my question and concern would be, is it to the point where the existing structure is too far gone to where even with remodeling activities going on, that integrity of the actual structure itself is too far gone to be saved without going into an extortment of amount of money to be able to make sure that it was a safe structure to live in? The second would be the current reality of existing setbacks from all four property lines, their nonconformity to existing R2 setbacks, as well as their nonconformity to the R3. Again, this is a concept that I don't really have any issues with, but currently, to my knowledge, it doesn't meet the side setbacks, the front setback, or the rear setback in R2. R3 is a little different in setback requirements, so it may be to where one of those works for R3. But I would just, because of the proximity to the road, especially on the side nears the train tracks, it is very close to the road, and I just think that it's something that needs to be considered, whether or not it is, we know it's over the setbacks, but whether or not it's going to interfere with any future utility improvements or anything else like that the street might have to do on the street. Number three would be the lack of off-street parking currently available and the lack of parking area available for future use of more than two vehicles. I was at the board of the planning and zoning meeting, and there is a particular portion of the property that is not covered by a structure that looks to be able to fit at least two cars, possibly three. That kind of plays into number five, in that there's currently an unimproved city street that is on one side of this residence. Part of that city street was dedicated to the property owners in other sections of that street. Y'all did those over and closed those sections on part of that street and other areas. And my question would be, that particular area, it is just a gravel drive now and is not an improved street. And if this is to be approved, whether or not that has to be brought up to city street specs, and whether or not the setbacks required by those would affect the structure even more than what it already does, and whether or not those could be worked around to allow them to do what they would like to do. Number four would be the use of the residence for its intended purpose and ability that will be afforded to the applicant to transfer approvals of zoning to different ownership entities or in the future. At the meeting, there was an individual that owns the property that was applying for the rezoning in their particular name. They intended that their use for the property was to use it as an extended stay type facility that would house, I believe, four different rooms. And my, a question was brought up by someone on the planning and zoning board of whether or not that, with the amount of money they were talking about spending on remodel to get it to livable positions where it could not be condemned and be granted to CO, whether or not that amount of money that would have to be spent to get to that point would put them in a position to where that type business would be profitable and sustainable. And if it wasn't, what was the intentions of that property going forward? There's been a lot of issues with some R3 zoning in town over the years, as all of y'all know. And again, while I'm for this concept and not necessarily against this particular location individually, I do think that if the concept does not work, there should be some consideration of the zoning not being able to carry forward to allow for a situation where new construction can be torn down and built back in its existing footprint. There are some variants and conditional permitted uses that can be applied for and have been applied for in the past by other property owners to build structures back in their existing footprint as a way of being allowed to do things on a nonconforming lot. And I would just have concerns that if it was granted to be R3 and that original intended use was not able to be sustained, that if there weren't any stipulations to that zoning, that they would be able to scrap the idea of where everyone gets started, build something in the existing footprint of what's there that was new construction, that would obviously more rather fit the needs of every day later to use, but be more affected by the setbacks and all of that. Six would be the, again, the possibility of those approvals being transferred to different ownerships. There was mentioned that there could be partners brought on at a later date. And this is more on the application of whether or not approval for their intended use that they are applying for can be transferred from the applicant to any partners that they bring on for that specific use, which I personally think would be fine as long as they were transferable for the intended use. But I do think there could be some gray areas if it was transferable and not tied to that specific intended use that's applied to where you stated in the beginning. The period of time given to the owners of, again, making improvements to the property, as well as the respective timeframe that's given for its ultimate completion. Again, if it was a situation where R3 zoning, which is a very hard to come by commodity in the town, is given for a project for one intended use, and it's not started in a good faith effort made to produce that intended product and make it an actual thing that can be of service to the community. You know, over a period of time, I wouldn't want to see where they just never picked up the ball and actually did what they said they were going to do and waited until it was forgotten, or it wasn't something that was being paid attention to and did something else. Number nine, or number eight, public safety considerations that be required if it's approved, given the location and its proximity of the residence to the street. If construction activities are to take place on the side closest to the railroad, I do believe that someone that's in the construction industry would know that there could be a public safety thing in regard to proximity to that street for not only construction workers, but for the general public. And I think there should probably be a requirement for some type of barrier, like you see in bigger cities where they put them on sidewalks and stuff, to keep construction debris from falling into the street and the cars and potentially causing accidents or damage, as well as keeping cars from being able to just hit an individual that doesn't think about where he's standing and takes a step back on his step and does pretty good by a car. And then the final consideration would be whether or not their application, if y'all wanted to approve it, applies for everything that they're actually going to need so that they could get an approval one time from this board and be able to move forward without having to come back multiple times because one aspect or another that affects the construction property was not taken care of on original application. I will provide this list of concerns to this frank to be able to give you all, but I just want to be able to read them out loud so that y'all could hear them before I went to this other meeting. I'll leave it to y'all to discuss and above all, I appreciate y'all's time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I'm not sure if this sort of period of COVID enforcement officer, what amount of money did they post for the initiative to bring after the use they wanted to make?
Their estimates at the meeting that I was present in was, memory serves me correct, $225,000 to $300,000. And I may be wrong, but I believe it was in that range. Thank you.
Dean, is this y'all's property? You got anything y'all want to say about it?
No. Unless y'all want to say anything, I mean, I've said it twice at the zoning board.
Yeah, no, I just wonder if you want to find anything to say. Hey, what's the zoning board?
They are free.
Okay, what's the way of the board? Was any of these concerns raised at that time?
Some of the setback concerns was raised, but I just thought I would have been with the parking. It's room enough, you should be able to get through cars back there.
Has any of this been raised to you?
Just some of that come up in the zoning board.
And do you have any concerns about anything that's mentioned tonight?
There's a lot there, but I can't, you want two minutes, I can't.
You want time to review that before they approve it?
Yes, I will.
You got a copy of it? Can you give me a copy?
I'll get him to send me a copy of that.
You got the pictures of your?
Do I have any pictures?
Of the, of this deal and the instructions?
I might pull something up on my computer right there. I'm good alert. I don't have any pictures.
Mr. Mayor, I will say, if everybody will drop by and look at it, you'll know that something needs to be done. And this is the best solution that I've come up with. It is an entrance to the neighborhood that we've been working on all these years, and it just can't stay like that.
I'm not aware of anyone that said that. I didn't hear that since I was first started. What I was told by Mike back then was, he didn't know the owner's name. That's just a little thought by all just.
No way he's to fix the property. Or to refuse requests for a tenant.
You were requesting that they continue on track?
Yes.
So that you can research about the issues?
You know, most of the field would continue, so say it. Let Eric just research on these points.
What was the motion on that?
To put tag under the vines and not let Eric just research on these ones. And let him continue it since it's in her wall. Okay, all in favor? Any vote, most of the carries. Then just, Dean, y'all get with Eric and he, Ted raised a point he wanted him to look at before.
Very, it's good to go.
No, it hasn't been approved yet.
When will it be approved?
Well, the next month, I hope. The next board meeting.
I hold on to mine. This started back in April, just to get this approved.
I don't know about that. It's the first time, let's roll. For the board, for a vote. It's the first time today here, it's had to be those. So it was set for a vote here today.
This was brought up at the last board meeting.
Yeah, but to set a vote, we're here for today.
That's right.
Get the set of votes, 30 days. Give the people 30 days to respond.
For the zoning change, you had to put notice out on the property, put it in the newspaper, it says, "Republic here," so they did all that. And I think that Eric is requesting a continuance because there was some legal issues raised that he's not fully prepared to answer today. So he wasn't expecting those questions. He wants some time to look into it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to Steve Hall.
Yeah, I'm Steve Hall. I take care of the city cemetery. I have been doing that for the past 13 years. Some of y'all were probably on the board back when I got it. Some of you probably weren't, I don't know. I haven't been back in here since then. I just want to tell you a few facts about the city cemetery that I'm sure a lot of folks may not know. This cemetery consists of over 23 total acres. I mean, that's a lot of ground to be mowing, weed eating, and poisoning firings and things. There's over 5,000 people that's buried in the new IBD city cemetery. And we've got a lot of graves in there that's not marked, that's unmarked. I mean, old graves, you know, I don't guess they're been there without putting markers on them. But inside this cemetery, there's over 150 individual family plots, you know, maybe like a 12 by 12, or a 14 by 20, or 30 by 40. You know, it's got little concrete walls up about that height. And they never did put no gate to where you can get in there with a mower, so you have to weed eat all of that on the inside of a lot of those. You have to weed eat on the outside of the walls, too. It offers many extreme challenges, challenges such as having to poison countless numbers of firings in the springtime, especially when it starts raining, firings pop up everywhere. I try to keep them poisoned the best I can. In the fall of the year, you bury, you find yellow jackets. And if you ever gotten one of those, you know they can work you over. Removing fallen trees and limbs, trying to fill in sunken graves. I noticed down on the lower end here recently, I've started having some sink holes down there for some reason. I mean, I've had two or three. And I just fill them in, and then a couple weeks later, they've sunk in again. I fill them in again, I don't know why they keep doing that. Eventually, you're thinking they stop and then... But like I said, it's got a huge majority of the cemetery job is weed eating. Picking up trash along the road and out of the cemetery, and weed eating the grass along the road banks, you know, because you can't get a lawnmower up on those banks. A large majority of that has to be weed eaten. This grass gets fertilized pretty heavily. There's a lot of elderly folks that comes in, especially down on the lower end toward Highway 15. They pour the fertilizer to it. I mean, when you mow it and are weed eating, it'll burn your eyes and noses, it's so strong. And I was up there a couple years ago, I, man, they're able to grow so fast, I couldn't even keep it cut, you know. I'd cut it and then it needed it again. This elderly lady comes down there and I told her, I said, "I'm trying to keep it cut the best I can." And she said, "Oh, hon, we poured the fertilizer to this." And I was thinking, you don't leave me doing that, because it grows fast enough without fertilizer. But also with this job, you have expensive equipment, such as my mowers. They're pretty expensive now. You got the blades, the belts, I've got my commercial grade weed eaters, trim line, weed eater oil, fuel prices. I mean, fuel flux rates up mostly, it hardly ever goes down. The expense of high-priced fuel, the expense of, I ain't poison, I mean, I ain't poison's expensive. And I use a lot of that up there. And even through all of the rising cost of equipment and supplies, I myself have never once came before this board to ask for an increase in pay in 13 years, you know, because I agreed to take it for what I agreed to. I was content with it and happy. If I've ever been contacted or asked by the mayor, or any of y'all, or any citizens hearing you out about a problem up there in the cemetery that needed to be taken care of, I get right on it. I get it done. I don't wait two or three days, I don't wait another week. I go right in and try to get a solution to it. But it came to my attention that the cemetery was brought up to be rebated on. And my question to the board is, is why? I mean, have I failed at doing something? I mean, my philosophy has always been, if something ain't broke, don't try to fix it. And I mean, if y'all got problems with it, I mean, you need to let me know. Why would it need to be rebated on? I mean, that's my question. And I don't understand it. I mean, the workload up there has increased because of the trees, and which I have no problem with that. A lot of the ground that I once mowed, now I'm weed eating, heavy to weed eat. And I've never complained about it, that didn't bother me. My biggest question is, is why would it need to be up for rebid unless somebody got a problem with the way I'm doing it?
I'll answer that. I'm the one that brought it up to be rebided, made the motion last meeting. I've had numerous complaints and it's... So you do a lot of the work by yourself? You have one other employee, is that right?
I got my daddy helps me, my son helps me. But on what I get paid, you can't afford hiring a whole group of people up there. I mean, finish what you say.
Well, like I said, I get complaints. It's never all mowed at once. You stay behind all the time. You can be mowing one side and it's knee-deep on the other, and then you mow it and then the other side will be. And it's, the amount of money, in my opinion, the amount of money that you get paid should be better maintained. And I had never, you know, up by the road, I went back in the backside of the cemetery, it's not visible from up on the road, and there's a lot of weeds on the tombstone that's never been touched. And part of your contract is keeping the tombstone clean, keeping the dead low-hanging limbs. You can't even drive foot down the road without limb scratching your vehicle. That's in your contract about maintaining rooming, low-hanging limbs, and dead trees, dead limbs that fall. Get that up and lost in the back. It's not, it's not been maintained like the contract said.
I mean, 23 acres, and it's raining every day like it has been. I mean, and I can be honest with you, what I'm getting paid, there's a lot of places pays a lot more than that for the amount of work. I mean, I can vouch for that, because I've checked around and I know. I mean, you never have contacted me about it. I mean, I'm up there just about every day. I mean, I mean, you know, if mayor calls me about something, I get right on it. If anybody comes up there and tells me about something, I get right on it. I mean, I hadn't seen them limbs hanging down scratching vehicles. I hadn't had nobody say nothing about it. I mean, that's what I'm looking at. I mean, 13 years, and then all of a sudden, bam, you know. I know there ain't nobody in this room still making the same money today that you started out making 13 years ago.
Hey, how many acres over at Glenfield?
It's, it was one, I think it was like 1.3, isn't that?
Less than two?
Yeah, it's less than two. All of it together is a little over 23 acres.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. What is the amount of money that Mr. Hall has been compensating to take care of this thing?
Forty?
Forty?
Forty a year, yeah.
And includes his fuel and his equipment?
Yeah, that's his department. Ain't poison, everything. I mean, in my opinion, I mean, I've always said, if you got a problem when it comes to me, you know, I mean, I never was contacted. As a matter of fact, I wouldn't even know about this if I hadn't been called and told by the mayor, because I didn't have no idea. Didn't nobody let me know nothing. And I mean, 13 years for the same money? To me, that should be worth something. I mean, if it's not, then that's bad. Because I can promise you, like I said before, there ain't nobody in this room working today for the same money you was making 13 years ago. for the same money you was making thirteen years ago. And that's the way I felt about it, you can get somebody to do it for less than forty thousand, I say, go for it. Because there ain't nobody gonna do that for less than anything, I don't think. If they do, you better get the tractors and the bush hogs ready, because they'll be up there within. I mean, honestly, I feel like I've been done dirty. That's my opinion, that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, please.
All right, Lauren Green and Terry Reno from Aflac. Which one of y'all want to talk?
Hey, we thank y'all for allowing us to come back and follow up on our, um, last presentation. We know it's outside of your open enrollment and plan year, and we had prepared to come back and talk about that you can still offer Aflac outside of the plan year, we can run a short plan year. The Section 125 does allow for employees to make a change, if there's a new carrier brought in, they deem that that coverage is better than what they currently have. So you do still have some flexibility, um, Aflac still has some things on the table for you guys, some guaranteed issue life insurance, and then also the free value-added service that we have mentioned before. Um, I believe I gave you guys all a book that had those seven included, I always kind of opt for the ADAD, accidental death and dismemberment, or the fraud protection. Um, but that's what we just want to follow up on and see if that was something that we could proceed with, maybe for an eight-one or a nine-one of that to date.
What do y'all think?
I think I'll be trying to, these gardens again, but, you know, we have a broker that does our health insurance, and then he does all the ancillary coverages as well, or he works through a local rep to do those. I don't think Aflac is offered through the local rep. My thinking on it would be that we need to probably, either us or y'all, be to get with our group, with Brad Kemp and Austin, and see if we can write something under his, I don't know if I'm saying the right term, but sort of under his umbrella, but we're trying to keep it all under one broker.
We can, we've approached him before, and he said that would have to come through the city, but he would do that out.
I don't know if y'all have any questions.
So what you're offering, what we currently, is that what means he does?
Yeah, it's a different company, and they're with Aflac.
Y'all, do you know if y'all offer any coverage that she does not offer, or, i.e. cancer, or accident, or?
Cancer is what we're known for, of course, Aflac can get in cancer insurance, a few things that were different is that we don't ten ninety-nine on claims, anything over six hundred dollars, we're not going to ten ninety-nine an employee, which we put them into a different tax bracket, and also the claims aren't around time, where we've got the one-day process, and I'm not sure exactly what benefits she's offering, I'm guessing cancer, accident in short term, is that correct? Is there a guaranteed issue life policy in there?
I'm not aware of that, I don't know either.
That was one that Aflac said we could come back and do outside of the plan year, um, that we could still do a guaranteed issue life. We'll have to have, I believe eighteen out, so if you got a hundred and twenty employees, which you would have, we'll never have an issue with that. And they also said we could still do that free benefit for your employee, whether they participate or not.
I mean, I'm not opposed to, to offer it if it's, you know, if it's all right with our broker and doesn't mean it's too much with our local lady.
I think with options, be more of an option or solution for some employees who are, who have had a relationship with Aflac before, if we're obviously not a high-pressure, strong arm, but it's an option that they can do, and then also know, knowing that, having a short plan year gives you some flexibility going into the next open enrollment, if you want to cut one out altogether, if it's not working, or if it's something that we want to move forward with, and where we can do some other, like we talked about the group products before, those are things that Aflac says we'd have to be the sole provider to use the, give all those benefits, but that would give you a window to see if that's something even pursued at that point.
I know we've done, we added some coverage back, you know, in March or February or something, if the lady came up, we added something, but it wasn't something that was under, it was legal shield, it wasn't under the insurance umbrella necessarily. So that's the reason I'd like to, I mean, personally, I'd like to see what Brad solves on, just to make sure it doesn't, but he's okay with that, that, you know, it doesn't interfere too much with our local, you know, local lady here, you know?
Yeah, like I said, we have approached Brad over four or five, and it's, I don't think it's pretty much putting a ball in our sport check, so it's pretty much one of y'all telling me that he's...
I'll be glad to know, he's clear, and, with his sleep, that let y'all listen, I think that probably is the best way, first to ask. And unless the guys have an issue with... Competition's more than pricing, and the coverage is, the people might be, are involved in the interest.
Yeah, definitely appreciate your participation, and also your fact of savings, which, I have to offer back as well, same on that, and the work and production.
I'll be glad to know, Brad, I'm calling tomorrow.
I think you'd get some good participation. So if Brad says that he will do that, do we need to come back to the next meeting, or going to proceed about going?
No, thank you, I'll come back and see it, because he's okay with it, I mean, if they're engaged.
I think it might just don't affect being...
Yeah, yeah, just be another option.
Everybody okay with that? All right? We'll let you know.
I need to play check with my other players a couple of days, but, just more wins, Thursday off night.
Right, next one.
Thank you, my buddy.
You know, we do appreciate y'all, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to departmental business field, you're up first, looks like. Oh, no, sorry, Mike.
Thank you.
I'll do the introduction, some people don't know who he is. Early on in my time at UCDAs, a need was voiced to me about, uh, trying to manage transportation in and around the loop from Munspur Drive over to Sam T. Barkley. We explored a lot of different ways, and we talked to Chad Wages, who was one of the engineers with Toyota Project, about the possibility of overpass, tunnel, all those different things that we might come to, and agree. We went out to the community, we got some letters of recommendation and support from industrial leaders in that area. And along the way, Mr. Wages resolved his partnership in the company that was doing the work, or, apparently worked for us. And we were fortunate to find A2H. Mike Waters had been there for fifty years, and he was also associated with some proportions of the Toyota Project. And that A2H has, without any pay, come up with a very nice option for us. UCDAs did both enter into a memorandum of understanding with them, that if this came about, it would be our strong recommendation. We couldn't guarantee it, but we recommended A2H being the engineering firm on record on this project. So they've continued for about three years now without a dime out of us, and come up to this point. In a brief exposition out of today, we'll get the overview, talking about safety issues, environmental issues, traffic issues, a lot of different things, and I know Mike will try to do it as expeditiously as possible. There's a lot of information here, and it may be that we want to have another meeting open to the public as well, to spend just about this. But Mike Waters is an engineer with A2H, and he's here to make a presentation.
Thank you, Phil, Mayor, and all of you. I, I know y'all are trying to get on, so I will go through this, as, obviously, this is a refresher maybe for some of you, maybe all of you have seen this, you know, you know the point and the intersection that we're going to talk about, and I don't know if my cursor yet can be seen up there, but this is Munspur Drive, as it comes off of twenty-two northwest, northeasterly, I'm sorry, and it's Bankhead. The red line, if you'll just follow the red line, this is Glenfield Inter- Intersection. So you're all familiar with that, very hard left turn for, especially semi-trucks, and, uh, my cursor go there again, and also, obviously, when that rail is stacked up, it's really, really bad. And so, has been for many years, as the industrial areas, uh, north of the railway have expanded, that's just exacerbated this issue. And so we, as Mr. Phaley pointed out, we've been in search of a, not only a right fix for that, but also looking for potential funding for that. And early on, we were looking at tiger grants, tiger grants, or federal funds that you all may be aware of, they were an eighty-twenty match. That was continued for a number of years, tiger one, two, three, four, six, you know, all the way through eleven, I believe. And then last year, they renamed it, and they, they called it the Bill Grant. And I'll tell you that acronym, what it stands for a little bit, but, um, with, along with that came a, a greater emphasis on rural areas. Not only the amount of funding nationally that was set aside for rural areas, but also a relaxation of, of the, the match amount, made this project more feasible. Um, so I'll just, I'll further, you kind of go through this slideshow, uh, you can, before I do, just as, as a broad brush, the red section obviously gets you back to Sam T. Barkley. What we think is the best option is beginning here on Munspur, not far after this ramp, get outside of the MDOT Interstate, right away, excuse me, and we start going with an elevated section to go over Bankhead, and then also over the rail, keeping in mind that there may be an expansion of that rail. We've been in contact with Burlington Northern and MDOT to, to try to get some early ideas of how far we would need to do this. But we would, we would propose to ele, continue that elevated section, a bridge, if you will, all the way over rolling hill drive. And that would, so that would make us a safer area for that, that residential population that seems to be growing in that area. So, and come down, uh, keep listening, come down to an at-grade section right in here, and then meet, and improve this, uh, this intersection here at Sam T. Barkley. So, I guess it jumped on up there. This is a traffic count, uh, yeah, I know you can't see the numbers very well, but I'll tell you that this is nineteen thousand and something on the interstate, seventy-four hundred right there. So, well over a third of traffic is coming through there.
That's a vehicle in the twenty-four hour.
That's right, that's ADT, that's average daily traffic, uh, as, as projected by MDOT's council. This comes from their website. This is just a color-coded snapshot of, of industries, and some of them, you, you may not be able to see in the color, but you'll, you know, just, this, this slideshow, we tried to, uh, develop this so that we could show it to you all legislators, people that would be stakeholders or decision-makers in that funding process, because it is a federal grant. So, um, but we tried to do some pop and wow about, hey, this is a lot of industry up here. And there's also this elementary school right here. So there's, uh, let's see if I can proceed on. Okay, I'm not going to go through all of this, but I will go through the, the brief overview and benefits. Uh, obviously, it's a, it's a west-side connector for industrial, residential, and school users to I-22 and beyond. Uh, it eliminates that three-stage, really gapped access that we were talking about, that intersection, that it would eliminate that at-grade rail crossing, so not just the, if the rail crossing weren't there, you know, it's still kind of an odd place for a lot of that traffic to get through, but, so that's really two different points that it would, it would improve. And I, I'm just want to, if y'all will allow me, please feel free to ask questions anytime, but I'm going to jump through this, because this was intended to be a longer PowerPoint, I don't want to bore y'all, but...
I have one quick question about the rail crossing. If this were to come to fruition, will the rail crossing at, or do you know if the rail crossing at Glenfield would be done similar to what they did out in front of Old Futurium? So, would they eliminate that?
There would be a discussion between the city and Burlington Northern, I think, about where, whether to close that, because we, I mean, it's signalized right now, you know, it would just take a lot of, if you took the amount of industrial traffic away, that this would, you know, it might be feasible to leave it in. But I do think they would, Burlington Northern, um, would want to request probably closing some smaller crossings, just to the east. But that's pretty important for those residential areas, in that immediate area, I think, is pretty important. These are just some estimates, uh, and again, these are preliminary, so as we go through further discussions, if you all approve us to proceed, we, uh, some of these may change, but these are estimates, fourteen hundred feet of, uh, at-grade road bed construction, and it's twenty-four hundred linear feet of elevated bridge structure. Misalignant features. There's obviously challenges on the engineering front, there are challenges on the permitting front, uh, utility relocations, or, look like they're not as, as many as some other routes, you know, that, that could be...
Did you go by that previous slide?
Sure.
So, so abandoned rail crossing Glenfield Road?
Well, yeah, that's, that's an early thing, that should be a question mark there. So, thank you for pointing that out.
Which one of the issues is that?
Uh, other challenges, obviously, right-of-way easements, we think those are fairly minimal. There's some businesses, uh, between the rail and Bankhead that had to be addressed, there's parsonage, obviously, at the church there, that would be impacted also. Item E here, funding challenge. This is what we have, is just a broad brush look at, right-of-way easements and utility relocations, you can apply for those under the Bill Grant. They really strongly this year emphasizing local participation funding in some degree. So, uh, in, in fact, what it's, how it reads is that the Secretary of Transportation, it's called an eighty-twenty match, but the Secretary of Transportation can waive that twenty, you know, reduce that twenty local match, you just have to, a little bit more into the application side, request that, which we would do, obviously. Planning, engineering design, by the Bill Grant, procurement, construction of the project through the Bill Grant. And I, look, he says hundred percent, potentially hundred percent for federal funding for those op, those items. Uh, we don't know until we get through that, till, till they make their selection. The Bill stands for Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Developments. And that's just some snippets about the particular grant this year. And, um, so, this is a part of the flyover that you'll see a little bit of, of video, this is a snapshot of it, so, see if I can, here we go. This is coming off the interstate on the left side, and, excuse me, starting that elevated section, and so we tried to, uh, look at future growth potential of all this area, and not impact... And so we tried to look at future growth potential of all this area, and not impacting it with an at-grade section. So you could, you still have some options there to expand that roadway that goes through there, or tie into it, you know, that sort of thing. And then obviously coming back down to grade before Sam T Barkley. This is another view, looking westerly, no, looking easterly. This is the interstate right here, off to the right. So this is the proposed roadway going north, and then north easterly. All right, so to meet the grant criteria, there are eight merit criteria. And I'll provide these if y'all want these. These come from my narrative that I've started. I believe that this project has, meets all eight merit criteria. And so these are different, I'm going to go through the first one. Safety is obviously the main thing that the public would be benefited from, and that is elimination of that intersection, that at-grade crossing. Improve safety at the elementary school traffic, industrial traffic, residence traffic. And this third bullet point, right here, vastly improve emergency response times. That's a big, you know, for that area. And not just currently, but in the future. State of good repair is one of it. We believe it takes traffic, obviously, off of the other interior roadways, smaller roadways, your maintenance costs on those 20 years out, you know, there's a certain amount of magic there. You improve those maintenance numbers by taking that traffic off. Economic competitiveness, obviously, there's the industrial park there, there's also the industrial park down in Marktown area, and then the county, I think, is starting some, you know, market, some areas down there too. And so it's, that's on the south side of Munster. This connects those two. Beyond that, it is a, if you consider Sam T Barkley as a better route than going through town for some areas, it really connects highways 30 and 15 to each other in a better industrial route. So those are all part of that. Quality of life, some of these are seen redundant, but they really are the same thing. Quality of life is, you know, similar to some of the safety issues. Safety of the residents by elimination of that crossing, for instance. Improved commute times, those are things that would, would occur, not just for emergency response time folks, but also for folks going to work, you know, industrial traffic, employees. So it really opens the area to improved economic growth, which in turn enhances quality of life. These last four are now, and this year is considered secondary merit criteria, but we think they need that also. Environmental protection, obviously, the time that traffic has to idle there, both vehicle traffic, industrial traffic, as well as the rail, slow times, delay times for the rail because of that intersection, because of how they have to slow down at that crossing, even a few miles per hour, improve that greenhouse gas that's deposited there. So innovation, really the hardest one to maybe put into a narrative, is the innovation portion of this. So what we're going to do is really rehash, hey, we're making all these improvements. It's a natural route, more natural than what's there up now, or more seamless than what's there right now. So number seven, partnership. We, we, obviously, this intersection, this is in the city limits, so we would, you know, you'll all be the applicant for this. Union County has expressed their interest in obviously supporting this in every way they can. Mr. Phil has, through the years, captured a lot of support from, letters of support from legislative folks, as well as the industrial users out there, and also the residents that are there. So there's probably, what, 250? 250 different signatures.
Have you got those letters from the school?
Yes.
Phantoms.
And we had, in those situations where they didn't feel comfortable asking for letters, we just did surveys, and they would sign up on those. So we have several hundred signatures to support.
We have contacted the DOT. We would like to contact MBA, as well as NMIDA, some of these you know, Free Rivers we've talked to, and also TVA. Back Stevens. One of the ones that were interesting in this beginning of this. Burlington Northern Santa Fe Road, so we've got their verbal, if you will, and an email, but we really need a letterhead from Burlington Northern. Obviously, this improves everything about what they do in that area. You know, they're going to come back with, you know, all kinds of cons about it, I'm sure, but, but to elevate all of them, there's a certain permit process you have to go through. That's a different function of Burlington Northern, but we'll have a different vision. So the eight merit criteria is a long name for local funding to match, is really what that is. And so what's already occurred that we can put a number on is previous studies of planning by Union County Building Association, sorry, but that's misspelled. There are some environmental due diligence costs that we think would be instrumental for the cities and counties, and want to go ahead and look into. As a result from talking with Phil, we've got some ideas from environmental firms about what that might cost. So that's a good one, because it gets you ahead of some of the other applicants in our area that are not there yet, hopefully. Assistance with future right-of-way negotiations and purchases. These are things just for you all that think, now, there is, there is a component of the Build Grant that might pay for those two purchases. Assistance with utility relocations. Those are some areas that we would like to put in as a narrative as the city is, you know, city, county, city, county, UCDAT might participate in. So discussions, comments, questions, and also want to, if you can help, get this video, I don't know if I can read this, we're on his computer.
While they're setting up, let me just say that we're not here to ask you for the $24 million that this is going to cost. What we'd like to do tonight is to get a commitment that you would stand behind about $6,000 of environmental studies. Now, we're not going to ask you to pay for them unless this grant comes through. We won't do them unless the grant comes through. But it will look good in this narrative if we say that the city is willing to support that, what was it, $6,000?
It ranges from right about 10, and there was a high estimate too, around.
But that was for the whole thing?
That was for all.
That portion that we'd like to get, about $6,000.
Which includes Phase 1 environmental site assessment, wetlands, cultural, historical resources, endangered danger species, those studies would be included in that 10.
Total package.
Yes.
Is it 6,000 or is it 10 to 14?
It's 10 to 15.
That's the whole package, the whole package goes forward.
Do you have a estimate, a range on the total cost of this?
Yes.
Acquisition of land, engineering, legal, construction, so forth? What is that?
And obviously, these are, these are preliminarys. A lot of it's going to, could change with comments from Burlington Northern, as well as the DOT, but the, the whole call would be in the range of 24, well, I say the range, 23 to 24 million. And the max that the Build Grant will allow you to, to apply for is 25 million. So a good project for, you know, in our estimation, obviously, they're going to try to spread that money out, you know, but that's our preliminary.
Very preliminary. You're saying the maximum, being the maximum cost today's costing 24 mil?
Estimate.
Estimate. So.
And if it's 10 years out before it's finished, we don't know what that's going to be.
If you get approved by this 2019 grant, you have to be complete with the construction by September of 2021, September 30.
Which is short time.
It is.
So we'd be making commitments very quickly.
When, when we apply for it? Now?
We have to apply for it by July 15.
July 15.
We had a month, they released it in little June.
Yeah, their notice of funding opportunities came out.
So this commitment of 6,000, is that city and county split, or?
No, that's the city.
But there's no other funding? And you said it was the range from 10 to 15, where's that at?
He explained to me that there are multiple segments of his vote. If we could get a commitment on the first one, the environmental study?
That's what the 6,000 you're talking about.
That's the 6,000. If we could get a commitment on that, not a dollar, but just a commitment that if the 24 or 25 million comes through, that that part of your participation will be guaranteed.
So those studies are done, so. We have, we'd have to be creative in our narrative to say that that was, you know, was his.
That y'all get committed to that. Because we wouldn't have time if you said, here's the money, go do it today. Couldn't have done it by 15. So if we can say that we're looking at that, and that you're committed to continuing the process, then I think it would go a long way towards us.
Yeah, meet that eight criteria of some funding participation.
I asked, what are we talking about committing to? If the project's 24 million, I mean, what would our, what are we committing to tonight?
We, we, well, just the first phase of the environmental.
Is that the 6,000?
That's the only thing they could say no faster for that, than having to give it to that.
That's all it is, you get the grant, the 24 million.
Good for you, Trey. And one question about that. Who's the responsible for maintenance in that?
That's one of the reasons we wanted to elevate as much as possible, because there's a lot less maintenance in that elevated section that we have.
There's no water running under that bridge, so it's not going to wash down.
We think that the future revenue, I guess you're saying, the growth that it would provide, it probably off the, but it would be something that the city probably.
And what? Think about.
One thing it hasn't said, when Toyota came and we were interested in tier-one suppliers, and when they came and looked at Glenfield, they said, no, because they don't want to cross the railroad track. If they're tier one, they cannot be on railroad tracks up right in there. There's a lot of land up in that area that has not even been touched, melded. You know that up there, all that grassland. 10 years from now, if that influx happens like it did in Georgetown, where are we going to put them? That's the ideal location.
And then this project goes to San Tito Barkley, that's not?
It's not. It ties in there.
With the curve, it has to go to Taylor's.
Yeah, bring that curve.
Because, I mean, you're talking about, your point of getting from Highway 30 to Highway 15 is a very good point, that what you're talking about right now is past this project.
Yeah, that was one of the first comprehensive plans we were drawing up. That was once a diss, and you remember that? That was called an interlude to connect 15 over to 30 with. That was one of the things they had recommended. And that's really the only spot we've got left to do that.
I mean, the thing that would be a concern is the school being there, and then 10 years from now, that's not that road that it is right now, it's a four-lane, you know what I mean, highway travel road.
Are schools on four-lane highways right now?
I mean, I love the idea, so I just.
Yeah, it's it, you know, I think.
Feeling like I'm on turn 20.